Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, to order. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. May I please ask that if there is anyone who is recording this meeting to please identify yourself by either using the raise hand function or unmuting your phone and identifying yourself? Okay, seeing none. The first item of business on our agenda is the approval of minutes. Joe and Bill, we have one set of minutes dated September 29th. Are you both prepared to move forward on those?
I am.
I am too.
Okay, I accept a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of September 29, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
The next item of business on our agenda is what will be a regular meeting agenda item, and that is the proposed MBTA Hingham Ferry and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. And what I'd like to do is turn it over to my colleague, Joe Fisher, who is the Board of Selectmen Liaison for Transportation and has been working diligently with various constituencies on a coordinated response from the town. After an update from Joe, we'll entertain questions from Bill and myself, and then I will open it up to questions and comments from the public. So, Joe, if you could maybe start with an update?
Sure, and I'll try to keep it relatively brief. Yesterday, there was a joint meeting of the Mass DOT Board of Directors and the Fiscal and Management Control Board, which is responsible for the MBTA's finances, management, and operations. Several of you were on the meeting. I know that Martha Buick, who's on this call, was in the meeting. It started at noon, went till 5:00 PM. It was a rather long meeting. Many of you, many residents of Hingham, sent in emails, voicemails. Some of those, some of the voicemails were read into the minutes. Others are, or all of them are in the record. It is very important that those emails and voicemails continue. So, thank you to those who submitted your comments. The MBTA is forecasting a continuing reduction in ridership for the bus, light rail, commuter rail, and the ferry, at least through 2021 and 2022. And with that reduced ridership comes projected reduced fare revenue. The T anticipates a reduction of fare revenue for fiscal year '21 of up to $57 million, and for fiscal year '22, they anticipate a reduction of fare revenues of between $114 and $271 million. So, as a consequence, the T is considering reductions in service, or possibly elimination of service, for the ferry and the Green Bush train line. Those reductions, those eliminations of service will be devastating on Hingham and other South Shore towns. If those reductions proceed, our smart growth projects would be imperiled. The economic viability of our affordable housing projects could be threatened. Congestions on Route 3 and Route 93 would increase. There would be increased gas emissions and negative impacts on our efforts to promote a cleaner, greener community, not just in Hingham, but on a regional basis. I've had several meetings with Joan Moschino, who is our state representative on this topic. She is helping to coordinate the response from Hingham, Hall, Cohasset, Situate, and Norwell, and the South Shore Chamber of Commerce has involved, been involved. I was speaking with them today as well. The Town of Cohasset is taking the lead in terms of engaging a PR company, public relations company, to help manage communications, and many of the South Shore towns, including Hingham, will be participating in these joint communication activities. At the next meeting of this board, I plan on presenting a letter for the Selectmen for their consideration to submit to the MBTA and possibly to the Governor. This is an ongoing issue that requires an urgent response. It is likely that the MBTA will be formalizing its recommendations before the end of this calendar year.
And Joe, for people who are participating in this call or watching the meeting, what additional steps can members of the community take in the short term on this issue?
Well, that's a great question. So, there is a website that has been set up, and I'll find the address in a second, directly to support the ferry. Bear with me, and I'll find it. And so, people can go onto that site and join and, you know, help support the effort there, you know, sending communications from that site. At this point, there will be a, there will be another meeting of the MBTA in November, and there'll be additional information about where comments and communications can be sent. I'll make that available. We can post it on the website. I think that would be the next effort. So, the website is called savetheferry.org. That's S-A-V-E-T-H-E-F-E-R-R-Y.org. So, going there, that's a website that was established by some folks in the Town of Hall. I believe that Jason McCann was the orchestrator there. Very informative, and it provides a method to sign up and to participate in getting your voice heard by the T and by the Governor's office.
And Joe, how do Hingham residents, what additional steps can Hingham residents take to just, to be aware and be notified if there are additional developments or actions that can be taken?
So, I mean, how to keep aware that we should be posting on the town's website additional information, and Joan Moschino's office is going to be making available on her website additional information. Between this meeting and the next meeting, I don't anticipate there's a lot that folks can do at the next meeting, where I'll be presenting a letter. I think we'll have more detailed information about the next steps that the residents of the town can take.
Okay. Bill, any questions for Joe?
Joe, thanks for the update and watching this situation for us. I would just encourage people to continue to speak up and to write in and call the T. I know I spoke with a lot of residents over the last week or so about the importance of this issue, and it's a, it's something that's shared by our entire community. So, just encourage people to continue to speak up and to voice your concerns.
Yeah, and just to follow up, Bill, on your comment, the data that I've seen shows that the largest group, ridership group of the ferry, are the seniors in our town. And so, they will be particularly affected by any service cuts in the ferry. So, to the extent that members of the community do ride or planning to ride, once, once the COVID situation is more improved, their voice is, I think, especially important to be heard.
Thank you. At this point, is there anyone in the public who wishes to either ask a question or make a comment about these MBTA service, potential service cuts? I recognize Martha Buick, and may I please ask that when recognized by the Chair, if, for the course of this meeting, you could please begin by stating your name and address for the record, and please direct all questions and comments to the Chair, if you could, please. Martha, welcome.
You're muted.
Martha, we can't hear you. Martha, you're still muted.
Martha, you are no longer muted, but your mic doesn't seem to be working.
I don't know if there's a volume control on your computer. Sometimes, I know I have to adjust that. Martha, I'm very sorry, but we're unable to hear you.
Okay.
I'm actually just gonna give Martha a bit of a shout out here. For many who, who may not be aware, Martha has been a staunch advocate of the ferry and has been instrumental in past efforts by the town to maintain ferry service. Over the past week, she's not only jumped right in to engage in this and attending the hearings, but she's also provided this board and the town with important information that, that is going to help inform the letter that the board will be putting together. So, you know, Martha, as always, we appreciate your insight, not only into the ferry, but to the messages that, that will best resonate with the decision makers on this. Is there, is there anyone else who has a comment or wishes to ask a question? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to go to our next agenda item, which is a request to approve owner-
Oh, Mary, excuse me, I think Andrea Young is trying to make a comment.
I beg your pardon. I recognize Andrea Young. Andrea, if you could give your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, Andrea Young, 18 Back River Road. My question is this. Are, are we in the South Shore the only ones affected by this, or are there other North Shore or other lines of the commuter rail that are, are affected?
So, at this point, the T has not identified the commuter lines that will be affected. They're all lumped together. They've talked in gross in terms of the reduction. With my understanding and Representative Moschino's understanding is that the Green Bush line is one of the lines to be targeted. I don't have specific information about, about the other lines. With respect to the MBTA, there was virtually, I'm sorry, with respect to the ferry, there was virtually no discussion at the MBTA's presentation yesterday about, you know, ridership, about the financial impact of the ferry. But Representative Moschino has direct information that the plan of the T is really to eliminate the ferry service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michelle, thank you for being an extra set of eyes. Is there, is there anyone else who has a question or wishes to comment before we move on? And if you can use the raise hand function, that'll be a way to help us ensure that, that we see you. Okay, seeing none. I will move on. Our next item of business is a request to approve owner refinancing for an affordable unit at Craftsman Village, which is located at Two Taylor Lane. Michelle, I believe you're going to walk the board through this?
Yes, thank you. Emily Wentworth, our senior planner and zoning administrator, is at a ZBA meeting tonight, so she couldn't be with us. But she asked that the board consider a request from the owner of an affordable unit in town to refinance their mortgage to obtain a lower interest rate and monthly payment. This affordable unit is in Craftsman Village on Taylor Lane. So, pursuant to the deed rider, the Selectmen, along with the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, act as the monitoring, monitoring agent for the property. The monitoring agents have to approve the refinancing terms prior to closing. Emily's reviewed all the paperwork. She's confirmed that it complies with the refinancing requirements in the local initiative program guidelines. I know these don't come up too often before the board, but it is relatively procedural, and I think the last one we had was a few years ago.
Joe, any questions for Michelle?
I think I know the answer, but I just want to make sure that our, if the board takes this action, it will have no financial impact on the town?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
It actually helps the owner make the property even more affordable for her.
Right. So, this is basically a condition to closing. They required, in order to make a recordable change, we, they need to consent both of DHCD as well as the town. Do we know, has DHCD issued their consent?
I'm not sure. I believe that's the next step.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, any questions for Michelle?
No questions.
I've had a chance to review the paperwork. I spoke with Michelle earlier on this, so I'm, I don't have any questions. At this point, I accept a motion.
I'll move that in connection with the request of the record owner of Two Taylor Lane, an affordable unit under a deed and deed rider, recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 44756, page 329. The board, one, consent to the refinancing of the mortgage loan for said unit for an amount not to exceed $226,242, subject to the prior written approval of the Department of Housing and Community Development and all other applicable requirements of the deed rider for such unit. And two, authorize the town administrator to provide written notice of the above.
Any further discussion? And before I do that, I'll just ask if there is anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment before the board's vote on this agenda item. Seeing none. All in favor by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item of business on our agenda is a financial update on large infrastructure projects. And prior to the board taking up what I believe many of you are here for this evening, which is a discussion and possible vote regarding a warrant article for a public safety facility, we thought that it might be a good idea to just provide a little bit of a financial update. And what we are going to touch on tonight, as the agenda item has indicated, is, is talking about financing these large infrastructure projects, not just the public safety facility, but Foster School, the Senior Center. And I know that when we start to get, talk about a lot of these finances, it raises a number of questions. But during the course of this discussion, it's important that we confine our discussion to the posted agenda items. So, we're going to walk through a brief presentation, have a little discussion. Michelle, if you could perhaps share your screen? So, with respect to this update, Michelle, if you could turn to the next, the next slide, please. You know, our current situation, as many of us know, is that the town has been facing decreased revenue growth, increased demand for services, and that was before the pandemic struck, which has, you know, had a significant financial impact on the town. Although so far, our, our town financial plan seems to be producing the desired results for the town. While we are in the midst of this pandemic, it's important to recognize that as a community, we still do have a number of infrastructure needs. We have assets like Foster School and the North Fire Station that have reached the end of their useful life. We have changing demographics with nearly 40% of Hingham households having senior citizens and a senior center that is roughly about one-third of the size that would be supported by our senior population. And we're also dealing with the impact of climate change and making sure that, as a coastal community, we are taking the necessary steps to shore up our wharves and seawalls. We also, with, with respect to two of our capital projects, there are some dependencies outside of Hingham. As many, as many know, Foster School has been invited into the MSBA program, which means the potential for the state helping to fund a portion of that project. When the pandemic first hit, the MSBA called Hingham to say, were we still wanting to go ahead with Foster School in light of the pandemic situation? And recognizing that a school solution was a few years off, we felt that it was important for the town to keep going on that. As you'll hear when we get to the topic of the public safety facility, the town has been looking for a suitable parcel of land for over three years. An opportunity has presented itself, and that opportunity is available to the town through the end of November. Again, this is a dependency outside of Hingham, and as you'll see, our view is, and the reason the board is considering it at this point, is because we do have these infrastructure needs. But in this presentation, we'd kind of like to show you a timetable of how things might unfold, because we think it, it will be informative for the votes that we're all about to take. Slide, please, Michelle. We fund capital projects in many different ways. We fund, we fund them with cash. For big projects like a school or a public safety facility, we typically borrow money. We take out debt. There are times when we get state grants, or we use community preservation funds. And in the case of the high school field improvement project, we had a public-private partnership that on a $6 million project brought $1.5 million of donations into the project. Over the last 18 years, Hingham has invested about $177 million in capital projects, which is just under about $10 million a year. The majority of that investment, $102 million, are in schools and school facilities. We've made investments in municipal facilities. We've invested in Capital Outlay, which is split between school and municipal. And we've also made investments in community preservation for things like the Recreation Barn, the Benjamin Lincoln House, the Lehner Property. Slide, please, Michelle. When we borrow money for a project, and, and again, if we think about Foster School or this public safety facility, these aren't projects that we can fund within our operating budget. So, we're going to need to go out and issue debt. There are two ways we can do that. One is inside our operating budget, and the other is outside our operating budget. Excluded debt is basically a temporary tax increase for the life of the project. The Hingham Middle School, the town's share of that was $32 million. We asked the taxpayers of Hingham if we could raise their taxes for 20 years to pay for the town's portion of the middle school. So, what I'd note with excluded debt is that because it is outside of the levy limit, it doesn't have any impact on an operating budget. So, in 2011, when Town Meeting said that we would allow the town to raise our taxes to build the middle school, if the town had not made that decision, we couldn't have taken that money and used it for our other budgets, because it's singular purpose for that one project. Now, sometimes we do have non-excluded debt, where we actually absorb it into our operating budget. The high school field project is a good example. The high school field project is being paid for with non-excluded debt, which means it's part of our operating budget. So, every year, when we're, when we're looking at our operating budget, we have some debt service that we have to pay for. That's an obligation that we have before we consider, you know, any new initiatives. We work with the financial advisors to help us figure out how long to borrow money. Typically, for a large capital project like Foster School or the public safety facility, while the construction is taking place, we typically use one year, what we call bond anticipation notes, which, which is short-term borrowing. Once the project is completed, we typically bond that project over 20 years. In terms of the payment method, a municipal practice is actually to have what we call level principal payments. That means that we have equal principal payments over 20 years, and the payment declines over the life of the loan. For many of us, we have a mortgage that's what we call level funded. Our mortgage is the same month after month, year after year. Municipalities use level principal financing, because over the life of the loan, it typically results in shorter interest payments. Let me just give you an example about how this works, because it's, it's important as we think about the public safety facility. This is the Hingham Middle School, and what you see in the middle of the slide is, you see the different fiscal years. Town Meeting actually approved the construction of the middle school in October of 2011. And those of us who were here at that time will remember that it took time to construct the school, and in fact, it was opened in the fall of 2014. Now, during the time that the, the school was being constructed, we issued short-term notes to pretty much keep pace with expenses. And from a town perspective, we only paid interest on those notes as they were issued. So, for example, you'll see in the gray box, you'll see the amount of debt service the town paid. In 2013, we paid about $63,000 in debt service. In 2014, we paid about $359,000. When the school was completed in 2014, we issued long-term debt, and you'll see that the debt service amount jumped up to about $2.7 million. That's really when the tax increase, you know, what was most felt by taxpayers. And what I would point out is that it was nearly three years after Town Meeting approval. That's pretty typical for these big infrastructure projects. And, and the reason that I point this out is that, you know, the board has been getting questions from people about whether it is advisable to move ahead with Foster School, with the public safety facility, given the pandemic that we're in, and given the uncertainty that's associated with it. The reason that we think these projects should go forward at this time is, is because we, we still have these infrastructure needs, but also, we recognize that it takes a few years for these projects to be completed. And the taxpayer impact of them, again, it's typically two to three years, two to three years out. Slide, please, Michelle. Right now, this is a graph that comes from the warrant, and 2021 is, is in the middle of the page. What I would just point out, and I know some of our advisory colleagues are on the, on the phone, the town's legal debt margin is, is over $300 million. Right now, we have just under $60 million of debt outstanding. And so, our current debt obligations are below both our legal debt margin and also the town financial policy that, that our advisory committee has stewardship over. So, essentially, what this slide is saying is that we have the capacity to issue new debt, which is, again, something that we've been working towards, because we've known that these infrastructure needs have been coming. And, and I would also mention that while, while you'll hear us talking a lot tonight about, about the public safety facility, about the Senior Center, about Foster School, those are only three of the infrastructure projects and, and the infrastructure needs of the town. We do have many more of them. Michelle, slide, please. So, this is a, this is a picture of the projected timing for the public safety facility, Foster School, and the Senior Center as of this week. John Ferris, the Director of Business Services for the School Department, provided the board with the information with respect to Foster School. And, and let me start up at the top. You'll see the, the years going across. What we're going to be talking about in the next agenda item is whether or not to purchase land on which to construct a public safety facility. So, that's going to be the decision for 2020. Should Town Meeting vote to authorize that, what we would propose is that at next year's Town Meeting, requesting funds for design of that facility. Those of you that were on the call last, on our meeting last week, saw some preliminary design information that was really done for feasibility purposes. We have a building committee that is going to be spending a lot of time and effort, working with the architects and others to refine a design. working with the architects and others to refine a design. Based on that timing, we would see that it probably wouldn't be until the fall of 2022 that we would ask Town Meeting for money to actually construct that facility. And you see STM there. STM stands for Special Town Meeting. And if that was approved, it will take, it'll take about 24 months to construct the facility. And so we would see it potentially opening in the fourth quarter of 2024. Looking next to Foster School, you're going to see that the timing is somewhat similar. Right now, the town is working with the MSBA on feasibility and design for Foster School. The MSBA has a defined process with defined milestones and we are following that. One of the requirements of working with the state is that we have to follow their process and their timing. According to the School Department, the MSBA would vote on Hingham's project and a project budget in July of '22. And it's the feeling of the School Department that they would be prepared for the fall of 2022 to request construction funds for a Foster School solution. That project would take about 20 months and then would be followed by demolition and grounds construction. So under this timeframe, the school would be open in the fall of 2024. Now briefly on the senior center, as many of you are aware, the proposal to relocate the police station is part of an effort that would allow the senior center to expand. And Town Meeting authorized some funding for design. But we really, you know, the senior center project is dependent on the public safety facility. We would see in the years 2021 through 2023, designing that space, issuing big bid documents and getting quotes. So that in 2024, we would make a request for construction funding for a renovated senior center. Again, the timing on that would probably be about two years. So a senior center solution, we're looking at 2026. Again, this is all based on what we know right now. And I would just add that again, until the public, until the Police Department vacates the space in Town Hall, the renovations of that space for the senior center and for school and town administration can't begin. So if the public safety facility gets pushed out, that would push out the senior center. Michelle, slide please. So if we were to look at financing this similar to the middle school, if we had a special town meeting in the fall of 2022, the biggest tax increase would not be felt until fiscal year 2026. Now, it's premature to put a price tag on Foster School. And I would say it's premature to put a price tag on the public safety facility because we haven't done the design. For illustrative purposes, we're using $100 million as the combined cost of both of those. Maybe it'll be less, maybe it'll be more. Not sure how it's going to be split. But what you'll notice in the gray box on the slide is the debt service amounts in fiscal years 2022 through 2027. And again, as the board is looking at advancing the public safety facility and continuing to work with the MSBA on Foster School, we are mindful that the financial impact of the pandemic could very well extend into fiscal year 2022. But we would also point out that if we followed a financing schedule similar to what we've done in the past, the taxpayer impact of these projects would be most significant in 2026. Michelle, if you could advance the slide. This is something that the advisory committee has seen in the past. We have a financial model that was put together by former advisory committee chairs and members. And it basically allows us to assess the tax impact of various amounts of excluded debt. And again, remember that excluded debt is debt that's outside of the operating budget and that would result in a tax increase. Our year one excluded debt levels are the highest because of how we finance. We typically look at the year 10 impact to say an average taxpayer impact. So if we were to borrow $100 million in 2026, the year one tax impact on the average assessed value house is a little over $1,000. And the average over 20 years is just under $900. Now, I'd point out that the average assessed value home in Hingham, according to our assessor, is $877,000. If your home is assessed at less than that amount, your tax increase is smaller. On the other hand, if your, if your home is assessed at a higher value, the tax bill is higher. Now, this is the impact of adding $100 million in debt. But we also need to take into account that each year, the town continues to retire debt. Michelle, if you could go to the next slide. This is actually a look at our excluded debt over the next 15 years. 2021 is on the very far left and 2035 is on the very far right. Notice that every year, the amount of debt expense goes down. That again, is because we use level principal funding and it's also because debt is retiring. Notice in particular that in 2029, we retire a significant amount of debt. I believe that South, excuse me, East School is paid off and that's the big one. So one of the things that we're looking at as we're thinking about financing these projects is that if we can time some of these projects so that they, the taxpayer impact is being felt as we're retiring debt, that in some ways helps kind of mitigate the taxpayer impact. Michelle, if you could turn the, so what we've done on this slide is on the very far left-hand side, you see 2021. And that is, that is the fiscal year tax bill for the average assessed value home. And you see, it's about $10,200. The majority of our tax bills go up by about 2.5% every year because of Proposition 2.5. The green bars that you see beginning in 2024 and going through 2035 would be the incremental tax associated with $100 million of borrowing. And again, what I would point out is that the biggest impact is felt in 2026. And again, that's based on the schedule that I showed you earlier where we would, which would mean a special town meeting in 2022, two years of construction and then issuing long-term debt. And again, notice that as this goes out in time, the amount of debt service decreases each year. Michelle, could you, thank you. But there are also some steps we can take to reduce the taxpayer impact. We can reduce the scope of the projects. And again, the very comprehensive design process that we go through for capital projects often results in value engineering and doing other things to reduce the size and scope of projects. I know that there were numbers quoted last week about a public safety facility. But again, that was based on a very preliminary design, excuse me, that hasn't had the benefit of the vetting that we typically do for projects. Another factor that can help reduce the taxpayer impact are interest rates. The bar charts that you just saw assumed a 3.5% interest rate. And if we were going to borrow money tomorrow, according to our financial advisors, the rates would be more like 2%. We also know that we have excess fund balance. And our financial policy states what we can and can't use that excess fund balance for. And one potential use, one allowable use is for capital projects. So, you know, could we use some of that excess fund balance to defray the taxpayer cost? That's what we did with the middle school with Meals Tax Money. Our financial advisors also can help us with structuring debt in ways that can help minimize. And then lastly, people may remember that the board has been working on targeted tax relief, including a senior means tested circuit breaker that would provide tax relief to some of our most vulnerable citizens. Michelle, if you could look. I'm not going to go through, I think I'm going to go through maybe just a couple more slides, Michelle, but this is just a chart to show you about interest rate sensitivity. And the bottom line is that for every half a point of a reduction in interest rates is a 6% reduction in a tax bill. So again, if we're borrowing $100 million at 3.5%, your tax bill would go up by $1,082. But if that interest rate goes down to 3%, it drops by about 6%. If the interest rate drops by a point, it's reduced by 12%. Our financial advisors believe that a long-term rate of 3.5% is extremely conservative. But again, at this stage with projects, that's, we like to be conservative. And again, this is just a bar chart that shows the impact of that. Michelle, if you could just go to the next slide. I mentioned fund balance and this is actually a chart that shows our fund balance. And if you look to the very far right, the gray boxes on the chart represent the town financial policy and how much fund balance we should have. At the end of fiscal year 2019, our unassigned fund balance was $6.9 million higher than the upper range of our target. And so as we again, consider how to finance some of these projects, this is a place where we could apply some of this money to reduce the taxpayer impact. And that impact could be, you know, could be significant. Michelle, I'm going to stop here. If you could maybe just jump ahead to the last slide. I just want to mention to my colleagues and to those on here that we've been talking about excluded debt, but I do want to mention that we do have non-excluded debt that's part of our operating budget. And the chart here on the screen actually shows the debt service over the next 15 years coming from our debt schedule. Again, what you see is that over the next several years, we will be retiring a lot of non-excluded debt. And to the extent that we can, you know, replace new debt with debt that has rolled off, it doesn't have an impact on the operating budget. Non-excluded debt could probably help us fund things like the Plymouth River Window Project, potentially some of the Wharf projects, potentially field and recreation improvements from the wonderful presentation we saw a few weeks ago. I guess my point is that our non-excluded debt could probably absorb some of these smaller capital projects. But when it comes to something like a public safety facility or a school or a senior center, those projects are so big that we would probably want to, we would probably want to finance them with excluded debt because they would just put too much strain onto the, onto the operating budget. So, you know, just, just to summarize, over the last six months, we've known about these infrastructure projects for quite a long time. And when the town was accepted into the MSBA program with Foster School and a parcel of land became available after three years of looking, I think the timing of a couple of these projects has become more, more specific. We now have a timeline for Foster School. We have a potential timeline for the public safety facility and for the senior center. And as we look out and look at how we might go about financing those, we, we have the benefit of debt that is retiring that will help mitigate some of that cost. And I would also say that as this board is looking out and as we're evaluating the public safety facility and the decision in front of us tonight, I want to assure all the citizens of Hingham that we are not just looking at that one particular project. We are looking at this public safety facility within the context of all our capital needs. And we most certainly are looking at this public safety facility within the context of the pandemic that we're all going through right now and these very unusual times. So that's probably a good place for me to, to stop and invite my colleagues to ask questions or make comments and as well as to members of the public. Joe, do you maybe, do you want to lead off maybe? I think you're muted.
There we go. I was saying Professor Mary Power, that was an incredible lecture in municipal finance. I hope I get an A in your course. I'm going to study hard. And I mean, it was an incredible presentation. It laid bare a lot of the issues that we look at on an individual basis, but you've put it all together. So, so really, thank you. You use some terms, I think I understand them. I just want to make sure that there's a general understanding. Basically, I mean, you've consistently used the term debt service. My understanding is that means interest and principal.
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. Cause when we pay mortgages, you know, some people think, oh, it's only interest. It's principal. Debt service is both.
Yes.
And you use the term fund balance, which is, I understand it's the accumulation of each year's actual deficits and surpluses in our budget. Is that correct?
Yep. And you know, we refer to that often too as our rainy day fund.
Yep.
Yep.
So with that clarification of the terms, I've got no other questions. This was just an incredible presentation. Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. Unlike Joe, I'm glad there's not going to be a test on that. So, you know, I've always, I've always thought, I heard a lot of this during my campaign last spring that, you know, the need to foster are our greatest capital needs right now. And I very much appreciate you kind of laying out how we're going to be able to fund what are probably our three biggest capital needs right now. The public safety facility, foster being a very pressing need and the new senior center. My question, Mary, is if we are anticipating decreased revenue potentially in the next fiscal year or two, potentially decreased state aid, potential decreases the tax levy. Am I right that those decreases will not, would not impact these capital projects or some of the projections that you had up there?
That's right. Because, Bill, because we would be financing these with excluded debt. So they're excluded, so they're excluded from the levy. So that's correct. And again, I would say if we choose not to move forward with the public safety facility, we won't have more money for the operating budget. These are kind of separate.
And the other question I have as well is, could I, we commonly get this a lot on the board. Are we able to use fund balance to assist with the school operating budget? I know that we use it for capital needs. Is there any way we can use it to help assist with the school budget? I know we used to do that.
So I can tell you, and I know the advisory committee has not been called to order yet. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, I see Bob Curley is on chair of the advisory committee. The town's financial policy essentially says that we should not use one-time money to fund recurring operating budget needs, which, and so if you think about excess fund balance, you know, it's, it's a lot of one-time money because in some years we'll have a surplus. But you know, maybe this year we won't have a surplus. So the financial policy as it's currently written advises against using excess fund balance to fund recurring items and only using it to fund one-time items.
Understood. Mary, again, thank you very much for the presentation.
Bill, Bill and Joe, just before we, before opening it up to the public, I didn't know if either of you had any other comments about, about your decision processes relative to, you know, all these capital projects. Because I, I think that, you know, we've been very focused over the past few months on the public safety facility. And we haven't had the opportunity, because of the process, to, for example, talk about Foster School. And I, again, I just wondered if either of you wanted to make a comment. I didn't want my remarks about these capital projects to necessarily be reflective of yours. So I didn't know if either of you had anything to add.
Well, even though you didn't consult with us in advance, I think at least from my perspective, your comments do reflect my views. And I'm really going to hold off with respect to the public safety facility because I know that's another item on the agenda that we're going to address. But I think that the timing aspect of, that you discussed really goes a long way in addressing how these various projects mesh and interact with one another. So while I had appreciated the issue, I hadn't seen it laid out as straightforwardly as you did this evening.
Thank you. Bill, anything else to add?
Yeah, other than, you know, the need to foster, again, I think are our most pressing as a community. You know, I, I'm at that school a lot. I see the problems at that school. Been significant problems in terms of the capital needs of that school. So my, you know, my, my concern was, can we do both? You know, can we move forward with the public safety facility without neglecting the need to foster? And I think, Mary, seeing how you laid this out and the timeline and how we can do it does, you know, give me a lot of confidence and makes me comfortable that, you know, we are going to be able to address those needs and they won't be neglected. So thanks again for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. If you have a question or would like to make a comment, I'd ask you to use the raise hand function. We ask that you give your name and address and address your comments to the chair. And again, I'd ask that we focus the discussion on the agenda item, which we are required to do under open meeting.
Mary, if I could just ask, is, is that, does advisory plan or the advisory committee plan on convening? And if so, do you want to, at this point, allow them to do that?
Yeah, thank you, Joe. We consulted with Chair Curley prior to the meeting. And based on, on the posting of the advisory committee, Mr. Curley asked that we not convene the advisory committee until the beginning of the next item on the agenda. So my, my understanding, and we've made the invitation to the advisory committee to have subsequent discussion at an upcoming advisory meeting, if that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Susan O'Horo, please. Welcome.
Hi, Susan O'Horo, Seven Wander Strive. I just wanted to thank you for all your work in explaining, explaining the budget and the priorities of the selectmen. However, as a parent of three teenagers in Hingham, and I've lived in Hingham for 15 years, I just wanted to express my concerns about the priorities of the selectmen at this time. Personally, I think it's outrageous that the town is considering building this monstrosity. How we spend our money as a town is a direct reflection of our values as community. And it's very clear to me that the selectmen in our town do not value our town's public schools. They didn't support this, the school committee's budget, which was proposed last January, and in the spring asked the school committee for austerity measures at the town, at the time of the school's greatest needs. And, you know, in the meantime, now we're planning this ginormous emergency center. Hingham has the lowest per pupil spending of all of our comparable districts, despite having a higher than average median income level and the lowest tax rate of all of our comparable districts. Yet right now, our students have eight hours of in-person learning. That's actually if their teachers show up, which is far below other districts. We are quite literally getting what we pay for and we're bankrupting our children's futures. It's outrageous. Money is critically needed to get our schools reopened. And when they're opened, we're going to need a lot more money to get these kids back in the game because they've been level funded for far too long. And when I've asked, you've said that money needs to come from the state or the feds or someone else, but not Hingham. And I have to tell you, I disagree because the money's not coming from the state. The state looks at us and they say, Hingham has the lowest tax rate. Hingham has the lowest per pupil spending. But Hingham has a lot more money to go around. So the money's got to come from Hingham. And I have to say, I'd agree with that perspective. The money needs to come from the town and the taxpayers, whether we like it or not. We can't afford to kick the can down the road like we did with so many other projects like Foster. It's atrocious to think that Foster's still another four years down the road. That's crazy. And then to add this project, I, I just, I can't even, I can't even wrap my head around that. What does that say about our town's values? That our schools have been so defunded at this point? And then we're going to build this emergency center? I, I just think this is absolutely, this is absolute insanity. Can we, can we brag to our family about the quality of our emergency center? Wow. I just, I just, I don't even know what to say about that. And, and you know, I was really, I was willing to let this all go and I was kind of getting into a good place with everything. And then I realized there is no plan to get these kids in place. There's no plan to get these kids back in school full time. And you know why? Because there's no money. There's no money coming from the town to get these kids back in school full time. None. And while getting them back into school is a complicated issue, and some of that has to do with the DESI, there's a large piece of it is funding. And I'm very concerned that if we don't act now, we're going to be in the same position next year. And these kids are going to be home and they're going to get a substandard education. And all these other towns around us, they're going to be back in school full time. Or you know what? Everyone's just going to leave and they're all going to go to private school. We're going to make pods, if we're going to hire private education. And there's going to be a lot of other workarounds. But all the rest of us who wanted to get their kids in, in public education, who valued that, we're going to be here. And you know what? They're going to be left behind. And it was, and it's just an atrocity. And you know what? I'd like to know what, will the selectmen support the school committee doing whatever is necessary to get the kids back in school full time? And will they use any emergency funds at their disposal? Because education, in my opinion, is essential. And I used to think that we all agreed about this, but apparently not. And also, what I heard tonight was that you guys have the senior center, the emergency center and Foster as your priorities. But I did not hear any plans to increase the per pupil spending on the education side whatsoever. So what I hear is that there's going to be at least another 10 years of level services funding for the schools. So that's going to be at least another 10 years of bankrupting our schools. So I'd like to know if that's going to be the process going forward. Because if that's the case, I'm just going to move the hell out of town because that's, that's not going to be a long-term solution for me. So personally, I'm not going for this project or any other frivolous spending until these kids are back in school full time. And there's a plan in place to put, to bring the level, the per pupil spending up to at least an average. I think it'd be much better to, to plan and use much more creative solutions than have been put forth to get the community center or the senior center and the schools funded. Because right now, what we're looking at is not pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to just respond to what I think I heard were two different questions and then move on if anyone else would, would like to answer. First of all, with respect to the, the question of the school reopening and the budgets, I would make the point that the financial plan that the school committee, the advisory committee and the board of selectmen all unanimously supported, called for fully funding all of our fiscal year 21 budgets this past summer. We actually took $3.3 million out of our rainy day fund to make sure we could do that at a time when many of our neighboring communities were cutting budgets and furloughing people. The reason that we adopted a expenditure control system was to try to give us some flexibility because while we knew there was some federal money coming to help with COVID, we didn't know if it would be sufficient. The town has been allocated $3.3 million in CARES Act funding. And the school department is, is basically, I would say the majority of that money is going towards the schools. The board of selectmen and the town administrator have told Dr. Austin and the school committee that, that they should spend the money that is needed to open the schools as they believe is the prudent way to go for educating our children. A few weeks ago, at a, at a Saturday planning meeting, we talked about spending money to secure, to rent a facility that would give us new space. We talked about different options, but we essentially said that we trust the, the school administration and the school committee to make, make wise decisions and that what, and that we were prepared to provide the, the financial support that is needed. I think we're all a little bit nervous about what's going to happen in, in January when, when the CARES Act funding dries up. But I think the good news is that the financial plan that we've put into place has given us some flexibility. So if we have to absorb some costs, we can do that without having to cut back on, you know, cut back on services. So anyway, that's, that's a response and, and I apologize. Somewhere in there, I lost my train of thought. So I was going to make a second point, but I'm, it's, it's, it's slipping my mind at the moment. I apologize. Ms. O'Hara, I see that your hand is up, but before I recognize you again, I would like to see if there's anyone else who wishes to ask a question or to make a comment. Okay, Ms. O'Hara, I'm going to recognize you again. I'm going to give you three minutes and, and then we're going to need to move on to our next agenda item.
Just not sure how much more services could be cut back than eight hours a week of in-person education. Eight hours, eight hours a week is just not sufficient to educate a child.
Yeah. And, and you know, Ms.
Much less, much less. And we haven't even touched about all of the special education kids that are not being, all of their needs are not being met. It's, it is a disaster. A disaster. And, and you're building an emergency center? The schools are an emergency center. I mean, it's, it is. I, I just, I can't even believe that this is not on your radar, that you guys have been silent about this. This is, you know, nothing should be, this should be number one on your priority list, every single meeting. Getting these kids back in school full time, whatever it takes, that should be your number one priority. The schools are the number one most highest priority, highest value, thing that contributes to people's property value, thing that's going to be. Education is the most important thing for a child, you know, for, for children. And, and you know, that's going to be the most impactful thing. A senior center, that doesn't contribute to someone's property value. An emergency center doesn't contribute to someone's property value. Education is important for someone's life. And, and you know, I'm willing to accept that, you know, you can write off a year here and there. But like, these kids are dying and you guys are doing nothing. It's an atrocity.
Okay. I, we are talking about long-term financial planning on this. And I, I understand and I respect your positions about the school reopening. But I also don't think it's appropriate to have an extended conversation about this when A, it's not posted and B, our elected school committee members who have purview a lot, over a lot of these issues and our school administration are not here to participate. I can assure you that the town of Hingham is very focused on this pandemic, on this health crisis, and on making sure that we as a community are recovering and that our children are being educated. The board of selectmen and the town have given our support to the school department and the school committee that we are prepared to devote the necessary financial resources to support a school reopening plan. Questions and concerns about the elements of that plan really are best, I believe, directed to the school committee because, because they have jurisdiction over this matter. We have indicated our support. And as I said at the beginning, while we are all very focused on this pandemic, we also do have significant infrastructure needs. We'll be talking a little bit more in our next agenda item about the, why the board feels it's appropriate to advance the public safety facility at this time. I'm going to take two more comments. I'm going to, again, for purposes of time, limit comments, questions or comments to three minutes. I recognize owner. If you could please give your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name is Eileen Hart and I live at 28 Stanford Drive.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for everybody. You had mentioned that the school committee and superintendent were directed to take advantage of the funds available through the COVID CARE Act. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there a timeline available to what exactly was requested and asked, dated and timed, available to the residents of Hingham? And if so, how do we obtain that?
Sure. So if, if you are interested in understanding what sort of reimbursement requests have been made for CARES Act funding, that would, you know, the way to go about doing that would be to make a request to our office for, you know, a list of, of COVID reimbursements. And certainly, members of the public are welcome to do that. We have made two submissions to date for roughly $800,000. We have three submissions in the pipeline right now that we are working to prepare. And the school department and the town have anticipated additional expenses that'll be reimbursed between now and year end. I'm going to take one more, one more, one more question or comment. But I would ask, please, again, for purposes of the meeting, that questions and comments be focused against the agenda item, which is a financial update on large infrastructure projects. So the last person I'm going to recognize is Anita Ryan.
Hi, yes, my name is Anita Ryan. I'm at 37 Baker Hill Drive. Thank you for everyone, for your hard work. I'll keep this brief. One question I wanted to understand is, our tax rates? It's often been said that our tax rate is low. Indeed, where is our tax rating comparable to our benchmark towns?
Ms. Ryan, Hingham's, Hingham's tax rate, I believe we rank 19 or 20 out of the 20 benchmark communities with respect to the tax rate. Yeah, we do have one of the lowest tax rates. And again, that's the, you know, tax rate per thousand.
Got it. And so I assume that's going to be a factor in thinking about how we fund these capital projects?
Well, it is in the sense that, again, under Massachusetts law, the tax levy can only be increased by a maximum of 2.5% a year. So whatever a community's starting tax rate is, it, the tax levy can only increase by 2.5% a year. it, the tax levy can only increase by 2.5% a year. So if so what that means again is that as we're looking at some of these projects, we have to look at whether we have the capacity within the levy to fund them or whether we don't. I would say for for many communities, projects of this size are typically funded outside the levy just because of the dollar amount.
Okay, thank you. And then my second last quick question is, you talked about using like the reserve fund and how the idea of the reserved fund is for one time charges. I guess one thing I'm struggling with and wanted to understand at the last town meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a COLA adjustment, and I thought that COLA adjustment was funded by the reserve fund.
I believe that was correct, that it was funded for just one year from the reserve fund. And I believe the amount of that COLA adjustment was correct, I'm off the top of my head, I'm thinking it was about $40,000. So as we're looking at the reserve fund, what we want to be careful of is that we're not funding, you know, things like, you know, police officers or teacher salaries where we have recurring expenses and that they're of a sizable amount.
Thank you.
Okay, I do see one more hand, and so I'll recognize Ms. Lauren Burn before we move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman. Hello, everyone. Um, so apologies, I'm a little bit late, was dealing with a work crisis. But I
Do you give your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, sure. 5 Pine Grove Road, Lauren Burn, 5 Pine Grove Road. Live here with my husband and two elementary school kids. So I'm interested in the public safety building under the large infrastructure projects and have participated in all of the Board of Selectmen meeting, excuse me, school committee meetings was on the one last night where Dr. Austin was mentioning, you know, funding gaps. We need $300,000 to for buses. We need more bus monitors. We need more bus drivers. So I'm just curious as to why the town feels the need to spend more than $30 million in a public safety facility when we have schools like Foster that you can't send kids to. There are huge gaps in funding. We don't know when our kids are going to be able to go to school. You know, the optics of that just don't look good at all. I'm sure there's a good reason, and I think residents would like to know. And also, if there is going to be a special town meeting, how can we potentially get school funding on there to also figure out a way to pay for these these gaps? I know I've asked about rainy day funds before, but I do think it would be good to have an explanation as to why the town is choosing a new fire police station over schools for our kids, which help our tax rates.
Sure. So thank you for the two questions. I'm going to answer the second question right now, and I believe our next agenda item is where it's appropriate to take up your first question. So if you're, if you're able to stay on the line for that, I, I think that's the better place for it. With respect to the second question about school funding, I too was on the school committee meeting last night, and a question came up of whether it would be a good idea to try to obtain additional funding for some of the reopening expenses being incurred by the school department resulting from COVID, whether it's the rent on for St. Jerome's or potentially bus. And I actually had a conversation with school committee chair Carrie Knee this morning because the CARES Act funding for which Hangum's been allocated $3.3 million is actually the source of how we're going to pay for those types of expenses. And we've been keeping track of how much money we have available, how much of those funds are committed. And we also have to, those funds have to be expended before the end of the year. We feel comfortable that between the CARES Act funding and the savings that we've actually built up from the beginning of the fiscal year that we can absorb those expenses without having to go get additional money. Again, at the beginning of this fiscal year, town meeting authorized us to take $3.3 million from our unassigned fund balance to be made available in the case it was needed if revenue does not materialize. Next week, we will have a first quarter update. But right now, it's looking as if there is sufficient funding to be able to fund those incremental school costs without having to go back to the taxpayers for more money. So with that, I think what I'd like to do at this point, so that we can answer Ms. Burn's first question, is to move into our next agenda item, which is a discussion and possible vote of a warrant article for a public safety facility. Before beginning the presentation, I would invite Bob Curley, Chair of the Advisory Committee, and Bob Garrity, Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, to both call your respective boards to to order at this time.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for your presentation. At this point in time, I'd like to call to order the October 20th meeting of the Advisory Committee at 8:16 PM. We do have a quorum. Indeed, I think all members are present. And I would adopt the Zoom meeting statement that you made at the beginning of the meeting on behalf of the Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Bob Garrity? Bob, I think you're muted.
Hey, how's that?
Good.
Okay, I'm not sure how many members I have that are on the call right now, so if we could do a head count. I know a couple of members weren't planning to be here because they have a few conflicts with that being on other boards tonight. So first, Paul Healy. I didn't think he'd be here. Joe Kelly?
Yeah.
Hey, Tally Lotta?
Here.
Bruce Macaloney?
Here.
Donna Smallwood?
Present.
Hey, Andy Tuchet? Okay, and I'm Bob Garrity. I'm here, so we do have a quorum. Therefore, I would call the meeting of the Building Committee to order.
Okay, and I know you've both adopted the announcement about the remote meeting. May I just ask on behalf of both of your committees that if there is anyone on the line who is recording this meeting, to please identify yourself at this time. Okay, seeing none. I believe tonight we are also joined by Todd Costas and Sean Schmiegel from Kesselboos. So welcome and thank you for being here. Tom, in terms of this agenda item, how would you advise that we proceed? I know there's a little bit of new information. I know you have some thoughts for the board relative to some of the discussion last week. Is this something that, should you be leading off?
Sure. So I have a recommendation and some information I'd like to inform the board of and read off, and and you will all react accordingly.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay. Okay. So thank you, Mary. I am recommending a revised scope for the public safety facility warrant article that will be before town meeting on November 21st. Given the financial uncertainty created by the pandemic, I recommend that we focus on the property purchase now and hold off on requesting funds for detailed design and construction documents until the annual town meeting in the spring. This change in timeline means that the Building Committee could spend another month or so working with KBA, Castleboos Associates, to our architect, to refine the conceptual design of the public safety facility. It would also allow us to complete procurement processes for both the architect and the owner's project manager for the next phase of the project. This would allow us to approach annual town meeting in April with concrete costs for the development of detailed design and construction documents. Finally, delaying the the request for detailed design and construction document funds will give us time to, more time to evaluate the town's financial situation in light of COVID-19 before moving forward. This decision is actually, is this decision to actually construct the new facility would be subject to future town meeting approval, perhaps in the fall of '22, along with the Foster School, as you heard in Mary's presentation. If the, if the board decides to move forward and recommend a revised warrant article for the special town meeting in November, the purchase price for 335 Lincoln Street would be $5,475,000 plus an estimated $50,000 for closing costs for a total request of town meeting of, to town meeting of $5,525,000. The town would issue a bond anticipation note to finance the purchase, which means that we would only pay interest on that amount for the first few years. If town meeting approves the purchase in November, the first debt service payment would be due in FY '22. Using a conservative rate of 0.5% for AAA communities as provided by our financial advisors, the FY '22 debt service payment would be approximately $27,625. As we've discussed before, the urgency in holding a special town meeting in November to consider the property purchase is driven by the purchase and sale agreement. If we don't move forward by November 30th, we will lose the parcel. And with it, we'll lose our ability to simultaneously address the challenges presented by our outdated and inadequate North Fire Station, Police Headquarters, and Senior Center facilities. After close to 10 years of research and review, we have finally identified an appropriate and feasible site, 335 Lincoln Street, for a new joint public safety facility. This parcel is the linchpin to the broader project that impacts our ability to provide or expand services to the community across several departments. The town has an opportunity to move forward and explore the full potential of that project. However, doing so, the window to do so is in fact closing rapidly.
Thank you. Joe, as the liaison, and I'm going to, I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot here, but Ms. Burn asked a question at the end of the last agenda item, and I'm, I don't want to lose it. Ms. Burn's question was, you know, why do we need this new building at this time? And while Tom has touched on it a little bit, I wondered if, as the liaison and a member of the board, if you would also like to respond to her question?
Yes, I would. And I want to put the question in context because there was discussion at the prior meeting of various expense items. And one of the other speakers earlier this evening mentioned, why are we going to spend $30 million plus dollars on this? And so as I understand it, there are the payments that will be going forward, there's, I would divide into three categories. One is actually purchase the property, and that's where we have an immediate time limitation based on the purchase and sale agreement. The second one is funds for fully designing and doing the bidding documents. And then the third category would be actually the construction costs. And based on what Tom's presentation was just now, is we are only looking for payments for the first part, which is 5.525 million. The second, which is the funding for the design, Tom, do you, do you have a recollection of what that cost is?
The preliminary estimate of that was $3.3 million.
Okay.
And Joe, I just want to remind you on the 5.525 million, but what I just read is the debt service in years one and two and possibly three is approximately $30,000 a year.
Yep.
A little less than 30 grand a year.
And so the cost for the bidding documents was about, what did you say, three?
3.3 million.
Yep, 3.3. And then the the third expense is the expense for construction. And what we heard at the last meeting, which was the report on the feasibility here, is that we got a scope of if we wanted to fully build this thing out to what I basically, something that's about three times the size of the current police and fire departments, namely of North Station and the current police station combined, that that cost was going to be, was that approximately 30 million, Tom?
I believe that number was 39.5 million.
39, okay. So that's, that's, in my view, the outer limit. And we need to figure out what makes the most sense, and that is an amount that is not being contemplated now, and maybe it can be scaled back, maybe it can't. But at this stage, we need to move forward, I think, with the the initial purchase of the property because there's a compelling need right now for the fire department. They really can no longer stay at North Station. That facility is not only outdated, it's dangerous. We're going to have to make some interim expenditures just to to make sure that firefighters can safely be there. But it's really a patchwork. We need to get the firefighters out. There's no ability to have both female as well as male firefighters housed there. There are equipment issues, there's access issues. So there's a compelling need right now to deal with that North Fire Station, and this is the property. We do not want to lose that opportunity. With respect to the police station, I've done a tour. I know a number of people in the, on the Building Committee have done tours. And I believe there's a video available for members of the public to do a tour that will demonstrate that what we have now does not serve the interests of the town, and we need to move forward with that. It's a project that's been put off way too long. I think our police officers need something that 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 allows them to more effectively function for the town. The town needs it to make sure that the services are rendered properly, efficiently, and safely. So it's not something that we can put off any longer. We put it off way too long as it is. There are compelling, there are a lot of compelling interests in the town. We can't stop everything and just do one interest. I think we need to make make a reasoned and balanced approach. At this point, I think moving forward with purchase of the building and then using the time to finalize the scope of the project to make sure that what we build is something that the town can both afford and also something that will serve the town for the next 30, 40, 50 years. So, Tom, I endorse what you've just recommended. And Mary, did I answer the question that was asked?
Yeah, no, you did, Joe. Thank you. And I just wondered, you've mentioned the needs of the fire department, the needs of the police station. I just wondered again, because things are interrelated, if you could also speak to the senior center. I know that you have done a lot of work on that and you're open to a lot of seniors. And maybe you could also put that into context because 335 Lincoln is a path to renovating the senior center.
It is. So we need to, I'll use this term generously, we need to kick the police department out of their current location to make room for expansion of the senior center. Right now, it really is. It's a size that doesn't work. Our seniors are not being serviced as they should. And it's all dependent on making sure that we've got a facility that works for the police, so we can move them to a different location to free up the space so that we then have the opportunity to expand the senior center and have services that our seniors deserve.
Thank you. Bill, before I go to you, I noticed that there are a couple of hands of people wanting to be recognized. The way we're going to go on this agenda item is after comments from the board, we will open it up to members of the Building Committee and members of the Advisory Committee and then members of the public. So we appreciate your patience with with what is our kind of standard process. Bill, questions or comments for Tom about his proposed change in scope of the Warren article?
I have a question and then a comment. So, Tom, with your proposal, and then I just want to make sure I got this right. So the special, the request at the special town meeting in November would be 5.525, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then going forward, spring town meeting of 2021 would request design costs associated with the project?
That's correct.
All right. And then the the build cost would be special town meeting 2022?
I believe that's the schedule. Mary, is that, that's right, right? Yeah, between specials and annuals and years, yeah.
Okay, excellent, great. And then I guess my, my comment would be, I know that the senior center is a need, but the most pressing need here is definitely the North Station, North Station Fire Station. um, North Station Fire Station. Um, we we have tried unsuccessfully for five or six years to find the firefighters in North Hingham a new home. That that building is insignificant disrepair. Um, the facility is is awful that the firefighters have to work there. And yeah, I think the, for me, the biggest driver is getting a location in North Hingham that satisfies our fire needs, but uh, gives those firefighters a new place to work in. So um, that's all I have, Mary. Thank you.
Okay, um, I I'll just add before uh, turning it over to the building committee. The um, I think, Tom, I I like your recommendation because um, I I think for me, I had a number of questions about the conceptual design. Um, as Joe alluded to, um, the amount of incremental space that we're seeking. Um, I I think it's hard to, it's hard for us to get our arms around something like that in just one meeting. And and frankly, I think that the building committee really, um, you know, we have seven very capable citizens who we've asked to work with our chiefs and work with the architects to um, design a facility that meets our current and future needs, but is also mindful of the taxpayers of Hingham. Um, I think what your proposal does is it allows the building committee to have the time they need to do that very important work. Um, so that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. I would also say that as as, you know, the question has been posed to the board about why we have to move on this now. You know, we've been looking for a suitable parcel of land for three years and fire stations and fire departments have response time requirements. So we just can't put a fire station anywhere. Um, the geography of where that North Station could be situated is is within a a small area. Um, we had a building committee that looked at whether the existing facility could be renovated, and basically they concluded that it couldn't be. Um, the the footprint of the site was too small. Uh, we could spend a lot of money and not end up with with something that would meet the operational needs. Um, I'd also point out that it was, I believe, in two thousand and twelve, maybe, when we established a town hall study committee to look at the senior center. Um, and I am mindful of the fact that, um, you know, but before serving, before serving at the town, um, I I was the head of the Friends of Hingham Public Schools, and our seniors in town supported the construction of East School, an override to open East School, and again in two thousand and fifteen, supported um, the necessary investment in the Hingham Middle School. And for a lot of years, I've been hearing seniors in town say, look, we know all these projects are important and we're doing our part, and we understand we're part of a community. But when will the senior population, which I mentioned earlier, is about, I think, forty percent of households? You know, when are our needs going to be addressed? Um, while I'm not enthusiastic about a senior center solution in two thousand and twenty-six, because it feels like it's a long way off, I I like the fact that this gives us a path to that because I do think that um, that the services that we are providing for our seniors are limited by space. And our, for a population of our size with senior citizens, our senior center is about one-third of the size that that it should be. So um, that to me is another reason why I'm supportive of us uh, going, you know, going forward. Um, and I do like the approach because I think it it allows the committees to do the very important work that have defined building committees over the years. Bob Garrity, I I don't know if you or members of the building committee would like to add anything to the discussion, make any points?
Uh, sure, if I could, again, Bob Garrity, one Plymouth River Road, uh, chairman of the building committee. Um, I can't really, this is the first time the building committee has uh, seen this proposal to divide up the uh, basically phase in the dollars over a multiple years for this particular project. Uh, so I don't think we get, we can uh, respond as a committee, but I I hope you would entertain a couple of comments from me and then a couple of comments from any of my committee members who may want to uh, talk, you know, talk about it. The um, you know, we are aware that this was a possibility, that that the town might opt to just purchase the property at this time, or at least support a motion that was at town meeting, uh, that would uh, uh, just purchase property at this time. I I think it's pretty obvious to anybody looking at this, that if you don't purchase this property, you might as well kick that, kick off, kick down the road any solution to North, North Fire Station and the the fire, uh, I'm sorry, the police department. At least five years, maybe longer down the road. Uh, part of the idea of focusing on this particular site was that the hope was that we could, the town, could locate a combined facility at this site, which would itself hopefully generate some savings than if the fire department had to go out and build a new facility and find a totally new site, and the police department had to find a new facility and new site. You know, it just made a lot of sense to put it together. Now, what my my committee did do in the short time period since we've been around is uh, we did manage to conclude uh, on October eighth at our meeting that uh, we did vote unanimously to conclude uh, that the three thirty-five Lincoln Street site, the kind of site we've been talking about, uh, is indeed a feasible site to build this combined facility. And we knew from there that, you know, the the town would have to do whatever they wanted to do appropriation-wise to uh, provide the resources to do that. So that's one, one comment. Uh, the other comment is, I I think, now I would want to put Tom A. on the, on the um, hook here, but I think in his presentation, he mentioned that there may be some funds available to at least let us uh, kind of look at all the information that's put, been put together today and refine the information we have, refine a lot of the questions about dollars and cents to a better plan, just so that the next six months won't, won't basically be wasted time. And if that is the case, then that would go a long way to be able to stay on the tr- the track that was presented, namely, uh, possibly looking for design money in the Spring Town Meeting and then construction money a year later. Uh, so there is some money to to work with, because we have gotten to look at a number of the, you know, the probable cost estimate that KBG put together, which was um, um, uh, KBA, I'm sorry, the uh, you know, that, those numbers were all new to us, and we've been looking at that, we've been asking some questions, try to refine the numbers, make sure we make sure you understand where they all are, and then perhaps even to be able to spend some money to make sure we have even better information over the next few months, so that we're a lot more comfortable with the numbers are and to, you know, take up on Joe's uh, suggestion is, you know, start right from the get-go to see where there are ways that we could uh, scale down the size of this thing. And and it isn't oversized at all compared to, according to the architect, who have done a very thorough job today in looking at the current operations of both the fire departments and the, the uh, police department and trying to translate the operations and the personnel they use into square footage, which in turn tells you how big the building is going to be. But there are always ways to get, uh, uh, scale things down, and we'd be more than happy to take a look at that. Uh, but at that note, I uh, welcome any of the other committee members who might want to chime in.
Mary?
If there's anyone, uh, yep, Joe?
I I was just going to respond to to Bob and then before, and then before you go on to the other committee members. I mean, first, um, your committee was asked to do an incredible amount of work in a short period of time. And you did it. So, thank you. Um, and I think what we're looking to do at this point is having the committee having answered the feasibility question, which we, which was the most time sensitive, is now to give you more time to refine what the design options are. The answer to your question about whether there are remaining funds that in fact you can do that work over, over the next couple of months, the answer is yes. Uh, so it's not as if you, the committee would be standing, standing idly by. There's, there are funds and um, we're counting on you to continue, to continue this work.
Okay. Uh, if if there are other members of the building committee uh, who wish to make a comment or ask a question, uh, could I ask you to please use the raise hand function? Bob, I I I I think you said it all for your committee. I uh, I I appreciate the comments and and like Joe, uh, appreciate all the great work that's been done in a short period of time and look forward at what's to come. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bob Curley uh, in the event that our advisory committee colleagues are interested in asking questions or making a comment. And Bob, I'll maybe ask you to moderate recognizing members of your committee uh, at this time.
Are there members of the advisory committee that have comments or questions on this agenda issue? You either use the raise hand function or raise your hand physically?
Bob, I see Libby Claypool has a hand up.
Okay, I recognize Libby. You're faster than I am, Mary.
Um, hi, Bob. Just a quick question. Do we know what this property was listed for?
Tom, is that a question that you can answer? Or I I I believe Attorney Murphy is on the phone.
Hi, the, the, um, this is Susan Murphy, town, um, town Special Real Estate Counsel. The property was put out um, by a broker as available with uh, marketing materials, but without a market, without a asking price, which is not unusual for commercial properties.
Okay, so do we don't have any idea what any other potential offers were for the property as far as monetarily?
No, and there, and there's, even if there had been a, a asking price from the seller, we still wouldn't know uh, precisely what anybody else ever offers. It's the same as if you go to buy a house, you don't, and there's multiple people interested, you never know what the other parties are offering for the property.
Okay.
I'm not seeing anyone else at this point. On on my own behalf, I'll simply say uh, from my discussions, um, that there are very, very few potential parcels available north of the railroad tracks that could satisfy the needs of the town. Uh, this appears to be a unique opportunity and one that the town should take to acquire the land and deal with the other issues as we move forward. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Um, at this point, oh, uh,
Mary, is that why Evan Sheen has raised his hand?
Yeah, I see Evan has his hand raised, Bob.
Evan, please go ahead.
All right. I've just a question in with the, from the, for the um, study committee. Based on the way the commercial real estate market is going, um, I understand there's some urgency before the end of November for the property. Are there any other parcels that we think there could be an opportunity to look at if we decide this isn't the right one, or we can't get the the votes we need and, or what's the, it just feels like the timing on this has happened very quickly.
You want me to take that, Mary?
You are Susan, uh, sure, Tom.
So you want me, you want me to take it?
Yep.
Thank you for the question, Evan. Um, so the selectmen started engaging with the broker on this property, what, Susan, back in? When was that? Back in June?
On this property?
Yeah.
No, this goes back, this was pre-COVID.
December?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, I meant last, yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, you meant last year, yeah, twenty nineteen.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, so we've been working on it for a while, the um, the uh, the other prop, so this is kind of a unique property, not kind of, it is very much a unique property. The analysis that we did, Evan, uh, to, for the North Fire Station in particular, required that we be located centrally uh, on three A in North Hingham, um, specifically in response to the amount of new housing that's along that route. So if you look at the call volume and the response time, um, goals of fire departments, we needed to be up in that area and centrally located on three A. It needed to be a sizable parcel. Um, it needed, you know, obviously it needed to be available. It needed to be at a, interestingly enough, it needed to be at a uh, located um, adjacent to or or very close to a tra- an existing traffic light so that we would be able to stop traffic um, and get the uh, to get the fire trucks out onto the road. So for those reasons, this is a, this is a unique opportunity to to get the to find a property that will fit the needs of the fire department.
Just, just another question. If we decided uh, to buy the property, then decided not to move forward with the public safety facility, we could then sell the property, correct?
Absolutely. It be, it becomes an asset in our inventory. We would decide to, um, if the town so wanted, we would uh, dispose of that asset. Absolutely right.
Yeah, I, you know, I I appreciate the, the, the need we have, and and unfortunately, we've, we have kicked a, a number of projects probably a little too far on the, the pandemic came. I just think the optics of this will be tough uh, in November, just based on what, what kind of everyone's going, in the middle of a pandemic, so.
Right, right.
That's all. Thanks.
Okay, um, I'm going to recognize uh, Fire Chief Steve Murphy. Chief, if you could give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, um, Mary. Um, Steve Murphy, uh, Hingham Fire Chief. Uh, my address is forty-three Orchard Road in Milton, Mass. Um, so I just wanted to thank Selectman Ramsey and Selectman Fisher for their comments um, about the needs for this, for the fire department. Um, you know, anyone that has seen our station, and if you haven't yet, then I, I invite you in a, um, potentially in a few days, I think we're going to have a video that will be out that will show the inside, because you know, we'd love to have people come down, but because of COVID, we can't have uh, tours to the stations. But, you know, I'd like to um, welcome everyone to view the video that is being published that will show the condition of this. And, you know, most people unfortunately are kind of surprised when they do actually see it, because, you know, this building was built in nineteen forty-one, and if you, you know, you can see it on the video, it's pretty much an original condition, and it served the town for almost eighty years. Um, and it's done a great job, but unfortunately, its time has kind of gone. And there's a lot of, you know, problems with that, that building specifically. It's too small for us. The, you know, the apparatus bays are too small, the apron is too small out in front of it. We have some design issues. We also have, you know, utility issues and all that stuff. And you know, the town kind of recognized this um, number of years ago, and there's been at least two different studies now looking at that and seeing what can be done. And as um, Selectman Fisher mentioned earlier, it's something that, you know, the two thousand and fourteen building committee tried to renovate it in place, and they realized that they couldn't do that. So that we, the fire department really needs um, to do something different. Our, you know, call volume has also changed over the years, and we've uh, done a couple of different studies that have shown the fact that our call volume is now actually closer up towards that area, especially with all of the development up at the shipyard or anything else. So this is the perfect location for us. Um, and, you know, we, you know, we really appreciate any support um, that anyone has for this. So, thank you.
Okay, um, at this point, uh, I'm going to open it up for questions and comments from the public. Uh, when recognized, please state your name and address. Direct questions and comments to the chair. I would ask that we keep questions and comments focused on the agenda item and that um, uh, I'm going to limit uh, individual speakers to three minutes so that we can make sure that we hear from anyone who wants to be heard tonight. Um, I recognize Shannon.
Hi, thanks for uh, the opportunity to speak here tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, uh, my name's Shannon Uer. I live at twenty-two Winfield Road. Um, I, there's a lot of information. I, there's a lot of information going around and I have so many questions, but I'm going to focus on two main questions to try to keep this brief. Number one, I understand that the North Station, Fire Station, the North Hingham Fire Station is deemed unsafe for, for the needs that it needs to be met right now. However, my question is, is it more unsafe than Foster School is currently for our children? And the second question is that it was mentioned that the new space on 3A will add approximately three times the capacity to what is currently allotted by the North Hingham Fire Station and the police station. And I'm wondering if this is actually necessary for a $30 million project, given, I understand that there's increasing head counts and citizens in that area, but there are also, there's a lot of increase of population in South Hingham as well. So are we looking at a $30 million facility in North Hingham and another one in South Hingham in a couple of years? And given, like our, do our crime statistics and needs actually support all of that? I just think that even the $5 million for the real estate, if it was negotiated a year and a half ago before commercial real estate prices plummeted, there's a lot of money that could be used potentially for a lot of different things that the town needs right now as well. And so I guess I just wanted those two questions, like, do we think that a fire station is more unsafe than a school? And do we really think that we need a facility that, that's, has that much capacity in covering only one part of the town at this point?
Um, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a stab at answering your questions and I'll actually, I, I heard a third one in there as well, so we'll try to get that. First of all, with respect to the size of the facility, I think you heard both my colleague Joe Fisher and I mention that the, the purpose of the feasibility study was to say, is this parcel suitable? And the design that was constructed was a conceptual design that basically said that this, this site could accommodate up to a 50,000 square foot facility. I, I agree with you. Last week when I was looking at sort of some of the plans and I was looking at the population projections, for me, it posed a lot of questions as to whether this is the appropriate size or not. And, and really, if we purchase the parcel, this would allow the building committee along with the architects to continue down that path and, and make that determination. I would also say that our Constitution Fire Station, the South Station, is, is around the same age and has significant needs. But what we would see doing for the South Station would not be of the size and scale of what's being proposed on 3A because it would not include a police station. And, you know, that is one of the other capital needs that we have. You know, with respect to your question about safety and, and conditions, I think what you've heard from our board this evening is that we believe that both the North Fire Station and Foster School are unsuitable, are unsuitable facilities for what they are intended to do. And that's why I think you're hearing this board advocate for moving forward with both projects because we believe that both facilities have out, outlived their useful life. And what we are focused on is how can we do both? I just would ask, you also made a comment and I'm going to ask Real Estate Counsel Susan Murphy just to respond. But I, I believe a statement was made with respect to the commercial real estate market and what's happened to properties since COVID. This again was a question that the board had. And Susan, I just wondered if you could speak to your experience as a real estate attorney with how this type of real estate space has been affected by COVID?
Sure, Mary. I'd be happy to answer that. So I've been involved in the, to say, on the town as part of the team working on this, the, the real estate aspects of this project. In my private practice, my non-municipal practice, my, one of my primary practices is the purchase and sale of industrial properties all over the country, including in the Northeast. I have clients in Massachusetts who are having bidding wars for the purchase of their industrial properties. There was a recent market study done, in fact, in early October for the Greater Boston Industrial Market in which the, the south of Boston Market is the second highest growth rate for industrial development purchases and leasing. So the fact of the matter is, and, and I, I think the kind of comment I may have made at a prior meeting is anyone who spent the last nine months buying everything online will know is that industrial properties is the hottest commercial market right now. So there is no indication that a renegotiation of this property would lead to a decrease in the price, especially given the bidding wars that I've seen happening within my own practice in the, in the Massachusetts market.
Susan, thank you. Anyone else with a question or a comment before the board considers taking a vote? Yes, I recognize Mr. Josh Ross.
Hi, how are you? Joshua Ross, 125 Wampatach Road. So I have a couple of quick questions. One, is there any state funding for this type of property like there is for our building, like there is for Foster School?
No.
Okay, that was easy. Two, if this goes forward, what is the town's plan for the old fire station? Are we looking to sell the property and, and use that towards the new? Or are we planning on keeping it?
You know, Josh, that's, that's a good question. It's, it's been assessed at about a million dollars. And so, you know, I think the town could, we, we, we haven't, we haven't made any firm decisions. I think that, you know, one option would be to sell it and use the proceeds to defray the cost. We also have a number of facility needs in town, so before we were to take that step, I think we just want to make sure that there isn't an opportunity to repurpose that space for, you know, some other town activity.
Right, and, and so I guess my last comment would be is that, for those of you know, who know me, know I've been a pretty starched proponent of Foster School the last few years and, and in my view is the number one priority, I would also say that I, I understand that acquiring property in this town is nearly impossible. So while I, I agree and I approve of purchasing the property, I for one, wouldn't vote on anything to move forward until a foster building is approved by the town. So I think it is wise to do this in steps because the, the land is there, you're probably not going to get it again, but as far as moving forward, I definitely wouldn't move forward until other money is appropriated at town meeting for Foster School.
Thank you. I recognize Courtney Orwig.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Courtney Orwig, 1036 Main Street. I just wanted to kind of echo Josh Ross's sentiments. You know, the schools are on austerity measures. We're 19 out of 19 in our benchmark towns on purple, per pupil spend. And I think we really need to have a real discussion about our schools and I, I understand this is probably a legitimate need, but I think in terms of priorities, I think we really need to start talking about our schools because COVID has really shown the cracks in the schools. And, you know, I have three kids in the system and I just feel like we need to, before we go forward with this very expensive project, we need to have a real discussion about our schools and I don't think our schools are getting the attention they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Bill or Joe, before taking a vote, any, any final comments?
I think that, my, muted, no, I'm not. I think the comments we've heard from members of the public express a clear concern about the schools. And this project with respect to the public safety facility is not intended to be in competition with the schools. It's, it's a capital outlay. It's not an operating expense. And I, I think it's just important that we focus on the needs of the fire department and the police department and the men and women who work there, that they need our support. And the town needs our support in making sure that we have safe and effective facilities. That doesn't mean that we're taking away from or reducing the priority that is assigned with respect to the schools. And I think having that school discussion in a, at a separate time is important, but it is not something that should be detract from our moving forward with acquiring this property.
Bill? I think you muted, there you go.
I reiterate two points, Mary, that I think you made that were important. The first point being that I believe this board does support moving forward on this school and also on Foster School. The comments with respect to the need to foster are pressing. I agree with every one of those comments. The need to foster are pressing. The move, the move now to acquire this property is because time is of the essence. But I, as Mr. Ross pointed out, and this Orwig did as well, the need to foster are important and I think this board also supports moving forward on Foster as well in conjunction with this project. And lastly, we heard a lot tonight about this board's commitment to supporting the schools with respect to emergency funding for a reopening plan. And again, I want to reiterate what you said, Madam Chair, that we will, we will support the schools with the needs that they, they make to us. And that's all I have.
Okay, before I make my comments, I do notice that there's one person who's asked to be recognized who we haven't heard from. And while I cut off comment, I don't want to, I'd, I'd like to recognize Ms. Sarah Abbott. Ms. Abbott, if you have a question or a comment?
I lost her, Mary, where'd she go?
I, I, I don't know, yeah, I, I lost her as well. Okay, whoop, Ms. Abbott, Ms. Sarah Abbott. On mute yourself?
I'm here, sorry, fine.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, sorry, I was helping a fifth grader with division, so I lowered my hand and came back, I apologize. So my, my, my comment and question.
Name, name and address before your question and comment, please?
Yes, I was just about to do that. Sarah Abbott, 23 Summit Drive.
Thank you.
I, I just, you know, want to make the point that, you know, we have waited, I feel like in some ways, too long to get this project going and I fully support and recognize why it's important to purchase this property and to develop this joint police station and, and fire station. But, you know, we've put off a lot of projects. We've put off Foster, we've put off PRS, we put off the middle school until the ceiling caved in. And while I think it, I recognize that we're in a in a, in a, in a special and unique situation where we can purchase this property, I, I'm a I wonder if, if this is something that if we do purchase the property, do we have to develop it right away? Because as the parent of students at Foster School, with the idea of, of spending more money with St. Jerome's and knowing that the senior center is not currently being utilized and that there are other buildings in the town that we own that are not being utilized, that are not being considered for the schools, it, it really does just sort of put the extra rub in the wrong way about spending five and a half million dollars when we're nickel and diming what we're able to do with our students. And, and, and I'll just leave it at that, if, if, you know, if the option is, if we do buy it, if there would be a promise to withhold development until we get our other ducks in a row.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Abbott. And I would just mention that if, if town meeting were to authorize the purchase of this parcel for the money that's being talked about, any, you know, future design work or construction would be subject to, would be subject to future town meeting approvals. So the, the decision in front of us right now is do we purchase the land or not? And the, the pace at which the town moves ahead with that is up to the town as well as any subsequent investment. I'm just going to make one last point before we, before we take a vote, which is that during the pandemic, as the, as the liaison to education, you know, we, we were asked, I mentioned it earlier, by the MSBA if we were still interested in moving ahead with Foster School and if the pandemic was altering our timing or our commitment in any way. And the town essentially said no. We said, we, we want to move forward, we need to move forward. You know, many on the call know that it took, it took three tries with the MSBA in order to be accepted into the program and, and it was hard to wait. I, I would also let people know that a few weeks ago, the town was also contacted by the MSBA to ask about the Plymouth River Project because this board signed a statement of interest to replace the Plymouth River windows. And, you know, again, we got the call from the MSBA a few weeks ago to say, hey, hey, Hingham, you've got this project, we've got this pandemic, what do you think? And this board, along with, with our school committee colleagues, basically said, no, we need to keep moving ahead on Plymouth River. You know, with, with the pandemic, it, it would have been kind of easy to say, gosh, this isn't the right time, or maybe we shouldn't do this. But the needs of Plymouth River are there and they're not going to go away. And I, I think the board felt that, that it was important to begin to, to address some of these long-term infrastructure projects. And, and that's kind of how I feel about the public safety facility as well. Looking at the numbers and looking at the financial impact, even if we were to move ahead as fast as we, as we could, we'd be on a very similar timetable as with Foster School where the taxpayer impact would be most significant in 2026, hopefully well after this pandemic has passed. So, you know, I think for me, for those reasons, it's, it's important to move forward. And, and I'd say one other thing, which is that you know, in a community like Hingham, we are, as Tom likes to say, we're in the people business. And I think we can all agree that the caliber of our employees, whether they, they work for the police department, the fire department, the school department, public works, the library, we have outstanding employees and, and our ability to attract and retain high caliber people who will provide the kind of services we all want in large measure has to do with the, the working conditions they have. And, you know, for members of the fire department, when you're on call, you're in the fire station for 72 hours at a time, so it's, it's kind of your home for those 72 hours. And as I look at the North Fire Station, you know, we've, we've been at this for five years and I appreciate that the fire department has been very patient. But I do believe that for us as taxpayers, we indirectly benefit from having facilities, having modern and suitable facilities for people. Things like libraries, schools, senior centers. We as taxpayers more directly benefit from those. We benefit from them, maybe it's our neighbor. But, but I would suggest that, that facilities like a public safety facility, like the DPW facility, like Town Hall, we as taxpayers benefit from those as well because I think it's all about attracting and retaining the high caliber people that just provide exceptional service. And, and I'd make one last point and I, I think it was Ms. Orwig who said that the pandemic has exposed, you know, some of maybe the cracks in the school system. I believe that's true and I would also say that I think the pandemic has exposed a lot of cracks in, in, in the municipal government as well. In Hingham, we as, as taxpayers have high expectations. And, and we ask a lot of the people that, that work for us and that support this wonderful community. And, um, and we ask a lot of the people that, that work for us and that support this wonderful community. And, um. I, I think some of the issues that we've talked about this evening aren't necessarily municipal issues or school issues, but Hingham issues. Um, and it, and it's my hope that as leaders of the community, and, and there are many leaders on this call. That, that we continue to work on those things because, um, again, it, it, it all goes back to the people. So with that, Joe or Bill, would either of you like to make a motion?
Sure, um, I move, uh, that the board open the warrant for the special town meeting on Saturday, November 21, 2020. Remove Article One and insert the following revised Article One. Article One, will the town vote, one, to authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase. The property located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, in accordance with the terms and conditions. They purchase and sale agreement between the town and 291 Mystic LLC. And two, to authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to grant and accept all easements necessary to develop said property. And three, to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available sums, I'm sorry, available funds. A sum of money to be used by the Board of Selectmen to acquire said property. And to take all actions necessary to complete said purchase or act on anything relating there to. And close the warrant.
Bill, did I hear a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. And, uh, Bill, there's one other vote here relative to, uh, this warrant article. I think it's at the bottom of page one of the vote page.
I don't, you mean, I don't see that, Mary.
So, um, Mary? I would move, uh, to recommend favorable action on Article One.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Okay, thank you, um, I thank the advisory committee, the building committee, uh, members of the public who attended. For your comments, for your questions. I appreciate Kessel Booze being on hand this evening, uh, real estate counsel, our fire chief, our police chief. The next item of business on our agenda is a discussion of.
Mary, could I interrupt at this point? Yes, please, could I entertain a motion to adjourn? Can someone on the advisory committee make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
They're moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Apologies for the roll call, but Julie, Traly.
Hi.
Uh, George Dennis.
Hi.
Dave Anderson.
Hi.
Harrison, DeBos, Dugoski.
Hi.
Tina Sherwin.
Did you, you just sent me, uh, Tina Sherwin? Oh, aye.
David Lane Cooper.
Hi.
Alan McDonald. Did we lose Alan? Libby Claypool.
Aye.
Devin Sheehan.
Aye, aye.
Brenda Black.
Aye.
Nancy McDonald.
Aye.
Annie McElhany. Did we lose Andy?
He's muted.
And can you unmute Andy?
I don't see Andy on here anymore.
Yeah, I see Andy, I saw him a moment ago. There he is.
Can I say it for him?
God save Bob.
He never forgive me. Uh, Victor Baltara.
Aye.
And Aaron Kelly.
Aye.
And Andy McElhany, are you with us?
He doesn't know.
I think you got the votes.
I think the, I think the motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, uh, Bob Gary, do you need, uh, you need to adjourn your meeting?
Yeah, yes, I do, uh, let's see, can I entertain, I'd like to entertain a motion from any member of my building committee president.
Kelly says, Kelly so moves.
McElhany seconds.
Okay, if I could have a, a vote, a vote on that, uh, Bob Gary, that's me, uh, I, Joe Kelly.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Chris McElhany.
Aye.
Donna Swallow.
Aye.
And Andy Tuchet. I believe he's not there, okay, the, the eyes have it, unanimous, uh, good night.
Thank you, Bob, good night. Okay, now we can move on, the next item of business on our agenda is a discussion of amendments. To the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service. Including but not limited to extending the term of the policy. Uh, Tom, I think you and Susan Murphy are gonna be walking us through this, um, are, are you the leadoff?
Hi, sorry, yes, um, I, I can lead off, the idea here is to extend the outside table service. Licenses for the restaurants that have been approved to date. But I think Susan could probably explain it in a lot more detail and perhaps more sufficiently than that.
Okay, Susan.
Hi, yep, so the outdoor table service is a, um, just a one-minute update, uh, or recap. Was an order by the governor in order to allow restaurants, uh, to bypass the normal, um, both zoning. And liquor license extensive process in order to keep them up and running and hopefully in business and, and get them. Through this pandemic and still be, um, in business on the other side. So there have been 12 establishments in Hingham that have received, um, outdoor table service permits. Or OTS approvals, as we refer to them. Um, the governor's original order expired on, uh, was set to expire on November 1st. The town was required under the governor's order to come up with a policy for issuing these permits, which the Board of Selectmen adopted in June. That likewise expired by its terms on, uh, November 1st. The governor's, uh, revised order, which came out recently, gives the Board of Selectmen the authority to extend OTS. Approvals and even grant additional ones if they were requested, um, to a date that is 60 days after the state of emergency is lifted. That is a date yet unknown because it does not appear that the governor will be lifting the state of emergency anytime soon. That being said, it could be three months from now, it could be six years, six months from now, um, hopefully not six years. Um, and so it is for somewhat of an indefinite period, except once it happens, then the restaurants will have another 60 days beyond that point. Um, you have before you tonight, uh, three, three votes. The first one is to make modifications to the original policy that was, um, adopted in June. That the changes to the policy update the references to the, the governor's orders and the related guidance that has come out of, um. The Alcoholic Beverages, um, Commission. So that in, in order to allow for the extension, that order from the governor also, um, allows the Board of Selectmen to make such modifications. As it, uh, may deem necessary to its policies or permit conditions in order to address the potential that there might be outdoor winter dining. Um, and so the policy that you have in front of you, in addition to just making some technical updates. Also, and, and extending, potentially extending for the, the period that would be 60 days beyond the state of emergency. Also includes, um, an additional condition related to, uh, an outdoor heater policy. That the town's fire marshal, uh, put out in the last month or so. As restaurants were trying to deal with the weather as it gets cooler. Um, so the first vote, um, would be to, uh, adopt the updated policy. And the next two votes have to do with the permits themselves. Um, but I, would you like to just take up, uh, discuss the policy first with that? How would?
I kinda feel like these are all related, so I thought, unless my colleagues have an objection. That we might kind of ask our questions, go through things, and then take the votes all, all together.
Okay, so with respect to the permits, there are nine permits that are to establishments that are created outdoor seating. Uh, on their own property or on property that they lease from their landlords. There are three prop, three establishments that in addition to getting OTS approvals, also received licenses issued by the Board of Selectmen. To use public property, um, and so there, there are two separate votes. One, one addresses the nine permits that are just freestanding permits. The other three, um, are, is a bundled vote that would address both the, the permits and the licenses. So that they can, um, be extended and move along together. There are, um, a couple of proposed conditions that go along with the, that are recommended. Um, that go along with the extensions. Um, and those have to do with compliance with the outdoor heater policy of the fire marshal. And the second one has to do with, and I apologize, here it is. Has to do with if anyone requires tents or other coverings for their areas that they would. Um, if they need a tent, they need to go through the building commissioner, if they wanna put up any other type of structure or covering. It's recommended that there be a condition that it go through the restaurant, uh, reopening working group. Just to confirm whether or not it needs any additional permits or to, uh, make sure that there's COVID compliance with, in connection with those coverings. On the properties that have licenses on public property, there's an additional recommended condition. That those, um, establishments be, uh, responsible for, um, snow removal. So if we got one of our fluke early, say Thanksgiving, um, snows where you have six inches of snow. But then it, you know, it kind of is still nice into, after that into December. That it would be the responsible, responsibility of the establishment for snow removal. And it would not be the obligation of the town if, um, to remove the, remove snow in the area that they are using for their outdoor tables. So that, that's the quick summary, but I'm happy to go back over anything that the board may have questions about.
Thank you, Susan. Joe, questions for Susan about the votes?
Uh, yes, Susan, so the first vote, we have suggested language that refers to the draft dated. Of the temporary, uh, regulations dated October 17th, I'm assuming that that really is now October 20th. Is that correct?
Um, yes, I mean, the, the reason why it states that is that the draft that was circulated to the board for review and anticipation of this meeting. Does have a draft date in the footer, that is the 17th.
Right, I guess the, the comp, the, the version I have shows at the top as amended as of October 20th.
Yes, that would be assuming it's adopted, uh, we can, but I, if you want to adopt the draft as of today.
Yeah.
That's fine, I, I just wanted to make sure if anyone went back in the record and they were looking for the document you were voting on. It does have a draft date in the bottom left.
Yep.
Footer.
Um, and then you mentioned the three properties that are, uh, they have a license to use public property. Do any of those properties, are, are any of them using property that is not Hingham property, but either state or other property? And do we need?
So the, the snug is using the tunnel cap, that's, the town has a right, has a lease for the tunnel cap. The permission to allow the outdoor table service through the license was obtained through the MBTA. That, um, the, the owner of the snug and, and his council has been notified. That there is a request to the MBTA to further extend their approval. So there's two approvals needed with respect to that establishment. That, um, that request is out to the MBTA with a request that they act on that prior to November 1st. So that is still, that is still pending, so the, the, the license, um, for that. For that establishment states that it's subject to the MBTA. So extending, the town extending its license would still keep in place the requirement that there be an MBTA approval as well. So I believe that, um, that's covered.
Okay, and the, all of the restaurants that are subject to these motions, am I correct that each of the owners? Has been contacted or they've contacted us and they are familiar with these requirements? And there's no issue for them as to compliance with what's in our proposed motions?
All of the, um, establishments that have received the permit, including where we had it, their council, um, and indoor landlords. Were notified on Saturday, um, that this would be on the agenda tonight. And they were, you know, given the, they are, they had the opportunity, they have the opportunity to be here if they wish. So yeah, they've, they've all been notified.
Okay, and, uh, am I correct that our public safety officers are comfortable with the, um, extension of the time limit here?
Uh, Joe, yes, we are comfortable with the extension.
Great, thank you. No other questions, and it's, I think it's real important that we do what we can, uh, to support our businesses in town. And this is clearly one thing that, uh, we can do, so thank you, Susan and Tom, uh, and the rest of the group for advancing this.
Bill?
I know you put a lot of work into this, I appreciate, uh, all of your efforts. I wanna reiterate what Joe said, you know, a lot of the restaurant owners I've spoken to are very concerned about what the winter months are going to bring. And how that's gonna impact their, their revenue, uh, and I think this, this does help. And I also appreciate you reaching out to the T on behalf of the Snug too, so thanks for your good work here.
Okay, um, I've had, I spoke to, uh, Tom and Michelle about these earlier in the day. I, I do note that I know that one of the businesses asked about the possibility of, you know, extending this outdoor table service kind of beyond the pandemic. And I know that, that many of us have enjoyed, um, have enjoyed that outdoor seating. I know that's a, that's a different decision for a different day. I, I just wanna let the public know that, that while the actions we're taking right now are, are relative to this COVID emergency. That doesn't preclude us from taking those matters up again at a different time. But, uh, obviously, right now, we're just sort of focused on, on what's right in front of us. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to, uh, ask a question or make a comment, uh, before the board votes? Okay, uh, seeing none, I, I know there are a couple of, uh, a couple of votes here, I'll, I'll take the first one.
You're tough.
I'll take the short one, uh, I'll make a motion that the board amend the Town of Hingham COVID-19 Temporary Policy. Regarding Restaurant Outdoor Table Service in the form of the draft dated October 20th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, all those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
I'll, I'll do the second one, I'm taking motion that the board have been the outdoor table service permits granted to the following establishment. By extending the expiration date of each OTS approval. To expire on the date that is 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. With it, or the date COVID-19 Order Number 50 is modified or rescinded by state action. As defined in the OTS policy, whichever is earlier. Subject to the following general conditions, one, if, if a covering is proposed for the OTS premises. It will be subject to review for COVID-19 compliance. If a tent is proposed, a permit will also be required from the building commissioner. Two, if heating is proposed for the OTS premises, establishments must comply with the outdoor heater requirements issued September 17, 2020. Are the fire marshal as the same may be amended. Three, except as expressly modified, modified herein, terms of the original OTS permit remain in full force and effect. Four, the establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. They are to comply with this approval, they result in suspension or revocation of the. They are to comply with this approval, they result in suspension or revocation of this approval and then fines in accordance with Massachusetts law. 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC DBA, a 99 Restaurant and Pub, Shipyard Ventures LLC DBA Almanove, MCC4LBD LLC DBA, Boathouse Bistro, Burton's Grill of Hingham LLC DBA Burton's Grill, Legal Seafoods LLC DBA, Legal Sea Bar, Range Hingham LLC DBA The Range, Lima Sports Incorporated DBA, South Shore Sports Center, Plaza Azteca Hingham Incorporated DBA, Vita Mexicana, and Paragon Funding Group LLC DBA Wahlburgers.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mary, may I make one correction in?
Please.
In number three, it should, it says OTS permit, but it should be OTS approval.
Okay.
You know what, actually? I want to make sure that these are consistent. I think, I apologize, this is my drafting, so I had, I should have caught it. I just want to make sure that it's just, it's just referenced both ways in this draft. And I apologize, in the policy, it's referred to as an approval. So I would suggest that the board consider modifying the motion just to have it state OTS approval anywhere that it says OTS permit.
I'd modify the motion to state OTS approval opposed permit anywhere in this said motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a revised motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, and the third one, and Joe, if you could maybe read this, and I, I see that there are permits there. Maybe you could just change that to approvals as you read the motion.
I will do my best here. So I move to that the board a amend the outdoor table service permits here, Susan. I think it should be permits.
No, it should be, it should be.
Even there?
Yeah, so the, the correct term is approvals in the policy.
Okay. Outdoor table service approvals granted to the following establishments by extending the expiration date of each OTS approval to expire on the date that is 60 days after the end of the state of emergency or the date COVID-19 Order Number 50 is modified or rescinded by state action as defined in the OTS policy, whichever is earlier, subject to the following general conditions. One, if a covering is proposed for the OTS premises, it will be subject to review for COVID-19 compliance. If a tent is a propose, is proposed, a permit will also be required from the building commissioner. Two, if heating is proposed for the OTS premises, establishments must comply with the outdoor heater requirements issued September 17, 2020 by the fire marshal, as the same may be amended. Three, except as expressly modified herein, terms of the original OTS approval remain in full force and effect. Four, the establishment may be subject to periodic inspection for compliance with this approval. Failure to comply with this approval may result in suspension or revocation of this approval and in fines in accordance with Massachusetts law. And B, amend the licenses granted with the OTS approval for each of the following establishments by extending the term of the license to be co-terminous with such establishment's OTS approval as extended and amended, subject to the following conditions. Licenses maintenance obligations under its license shall include snow removal on the licensed property, and the town shall have no obligation or liability for snow removal. A Fork in the Road LLC DBA The Square Cafe, Brute Awakenings, and BENE Inc. DBA The Snug.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, Susan, Tom, Michelle, Restaurant Opening Committee. Thank you all very much. Next item of business on the agenda is an early voting update, and we are joined this evening by our town clerk Eileen McCracken. Eileen, welcome, and thank you very much for joining us this evening. We thought that since early voting has begun since the last Board of Select meeting, we might ask you to give us and the community an update on just on how things are going, any instructions or information that you want to communicate to voters. So, so welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. The, we, we are doing early voting. We started on Sunday. We've had 1466 number of people have come in in person. Some of them are people that we had already sent our ballots out to, so we had to do a little adjusting with that. But there's no problem with that. We can just accept them as voting, and that would be the, the way that they would be voting. We sent out approximately 8,500 ballots, and I had a great group of people that helped me do that because I certainly and my team wouldn't have been able to do all of that in a very short period of time. So we sent one group out on, on October 10th, excuse me, October 5th, and then the next group went out on October 7th. And now they're all coming back. So we are having the, the early voting at the town hall on the second floor in the meeting, the general meeting room up on the second floor. And it is set up just like a, a polling place. We have everything sanitized. We have, the people are able to take a pen to sign the form, sign the envelope. They put it aside. They're sanitized later. They take something to seal the envelope and also the pen to mark the, the ballot with. They drop it in a box at the end where, where they put their ballot, and then we sanitize that and put them back to the front again. I can't think of anything else other than we have some really beautiful signs out on the front lawn that the, the Girl Scouts had made, and I think if you get the chance to go by and see them, it's, they're really cute.
Eileen, how long does early voting extend until?
It's until October 30th. Fully right through the weekends and.
And
forever.
People who are, you know, working during business hours, are there any evening or weekend hours where early, where early voting is available to them?
Well, we're open until seven on Tuesdays. That's our regular work hours. But we're also open on Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 2.
Okay, and, and one last question before turning it over to my colleagues. You mentioned that some people requested a ballot by mail and elected to come in in person. For, for individuals who are thinking about doing that, should they bring in their, their, the ballot they received in the mail, or what, what can they do if they want to vote in person that, that, that helps your office?
There's not a requirement to bring the ballot back. They just, they wouldn't be able to use it anyway, so they can either keep it or, or bring it in. We've, we've had, it's been kind of half and half. Some have brought them back and some have kept them at, at home. Maybe they're going to frame them.
And, and I'm sorry, one other question because it's come up. I've, I've seen it on social media. Are, are, whenever the votes counted? When are the early votes and the votes by mail counted?
We put them in the machine the second week of early voting. We have voter registration on Saturday, and we can't do them until after that. So we give the, the time for anything that might be postmarked Saturday to come in for, for voter registration. And then on Tuesday, I can start putting them through the machine. They are not tallied though until eight o'clock on November 3rd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, questions for Eileen?
Eileen, you've had nothing to do.
No, I've been hanging around, eating bonbons.
This is, it's a Herculean task, and thank you for leading the charge. You know, voting is, is our right and our privilege, and you're making it, you're making it so that we can all exercise it, so, so thank you. I have spoken to people who have voted both early and different people who have done the mail-in, and they really appreciate what you've done. The fact that if you're voting by mail, you can drop off your ballot right outside town hall. There's the mailbox, and there's a note where to deposit it, and there's also a note where the municipal light bills are paid saying, don't put your vote there. Don't put your ballot there. Put it in the town hall mailbox. All those notes, you don't think about at the time, but they are helpful. Some people drive by, they're in a rush, and so this makes it all easier for them to, to vote. So thank you. Got no questions.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you for all you do, and I know that the mail-in ballots and the early voting is significantly tied with the, and a presidential year, and the pandemic is making that even more, more work for you, and I think your office and you are doing a great job, and very much appreciate all you're doing.
Eileen? You look good.
If I can just, my understanding is that if someone had requested an absentee ballot, and they bring it in, that's not the ballot that they use. You, you still give them a ballot for, they still would vote on a different ballot. And if they brought in the absentee ballot, it would either be tossed or destroyed, or they could keep it, but that, that's, wouldn't be used for voting. Is that correct?
It, it's the same ballot, but no, they don't use it for voting. We give them a ballot when they come in.
Exactly, great.
Any members of the public have a question regarding the election? Eileen, I, I requested a ballot by mail, and it arrived, and I filled it out, and I put it in the mail, and there's a website in the state. I can't remember the address, but you can actually look up the status of your ballot.
Yes, it's trackyourballot.com, I think.
Yeah, trackyourballot.com. And I, I put my ballot in the mailbox at our house here the evening of October 5th. And by October 8th, it was designated as being received and processed by, by the town clerk. So, you know, I, I know there's been some, some questions and concerns about how long it takes ballots to, you know, get, get from our homes into the town clerk's office. I didn't put any additional postage on it or anything. It, it was there within a day or two, so.
You know, I have to say that the postmaster has been very helpful there. They are not sending the ballots out to the, to the, what do you call it, the transfer area that they normally would do them. They're keeping them in-house, and they're processing them the right, right there in the Hingham Post Office. Normally, they would go, I think, to Brockton. So this has been very helpful to us because there's very big turnaround. We sent them out, and somebody down the street said they already got their ballots, so. But it was, it's really very good. We've been pleased with the, the efforts of the post office too.
Well, I, I echo my colleagues. Thanks and appreciation to you and your team for mobilizing this big and important effort. Joe and Bill, we actually have a possible vote with the warrant that is, is, is related to Eileen, so I wondered if, if one of you would like to make a motion on possible vote number one.
I'd make a motion to sign the warrant for the 2020 state presidential election on November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Eileen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I think before we do the COVID-19 update, we have two other possible votes relative to collective bargaining agreements. Joe and Bill, you may recall several weeks ago that, that Russ Kahn from the Personnel Board came in and, and reviewed these with the board, and we voted. These are two kind of procedural votes to sign the CBAs that we adopted in a previous meeting. If, if either of you have any questions, Tom or Michelle could answer them. Otherwise, I'd accept motions.
I have a question similar to one I raised before. I don't have the document in front of me. Are we authorizing the chair to sign, or will we each be signing as members of the board?
These, I believe, all three members of the board sign.
I think we all sign the CBAs.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
One thing, Mary, I'm, I'm gonna, on the second of the last two remaining votes, I'm gonna abstain as my brother is part of that bargaining unit. But I'm happy to make the motion on, on the first of the.
Why don't you go ahead and do that, Bill? Thank you.
I'm making a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with Police Superior Officers Union, Superior Officers Union, MCO P Local 405 for the period commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to sign the collective bargaining agreement with the Police Benevolent Association, Inc. for the period commencing July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Bill?
Abstention, and Heidi, could you please note that in the minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom and Michelle, COVID-19 update?
Thank you, Mary. Okay, the COVID update for today, 10/20/2020. As of today, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is reporting 142,295 confirmed cases in Massachusetts, of which 10,786 are in Plymouth County. As you know, Hingham became a red community last Wednesday, October 14th. As of that day, DPH was reporting 371 confirmed COVID-19 cases in Hingham with an average daily case rate over the previous 14 days of 9.9 per 100,000 population. This past week with, was our first week in the red category. Town takes this designation very seriously. DPH has informed us that they will consider Hingham to be a high, to be high risk if we remain in the red for three consecutive weeks. A prolonged period in the red category could negatively impact our local economy and our ability to enjoy many of the sectors and activities that have cautiously reopened over the past few months. The Hingham Health Department continues to work with the state's Community Tracing Collaborative to conduct contact tracing to help accelerate our efforts to contain the spread of COVID-19, as we are also working closely with state epidemiologists. As we mentioned last week, we are seeking, we are seeing an uptick in cases in the youth sports community, leading to many teams being quarantined in town. This also affects parents and other family members of participants as we are seeing household spread of COVID-19. So far, these cases have not resulted in large-scale impacts to Hingham Public Schools as students in Hingham Public Schools remain at least six feet apart in classrooms. However, should social distancing in classrooms change, i.e. decrease, COVID-19 cases and students subject to quarantine could rise as they have in some other schools where social distancing is not able to be practiced to the same degree. Please remember that if you are contacted by the Hingham Health Department or state's contact tracing team, please answer the phone to discuss quarantine, your symptoms, and your close contacts. If you are subject to a quarantine, a negative test will not lift the quarantine. You must remain home for the 14-day period and refrain from engaging in school, sports, work, and other activities. We are asking all residents, businesses, and visitors to please be vigilant in following state and federal COVID-19 recommendations, especially as they relate to social distancing and face coverings. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Michelle, anything to add this evening?
Nothing, thank you.
Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom on the COVID-19 update?
Not for me.
Okay, members of the public, questions on the COVID-19 update? And Tom, tomorrow is the day where we will receive the weekly update from the state, which will let us know if, if we are still in the red category or whether there's been any change to that.
That's exactly right, Mary.
Okay, thank you. At this point in the agenda, we have a public comment. If anyone is interested in a comment, we limit those to three minutes per speaker. They must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the board. Would anyone have a comment at this time? I recognize Martha Buick.
You're muted. You're muted.
Martha, we're still not hearing you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, fine, I'm on the phone. Thank you very much. I, it is related to the issue of the MBTA cuts. And while the meeting's been going on, I just wanted to let you know that I've been trying to assemble the value of the investments down in the Hingham Shipyard. And it's probably going to be something like over $300 million of private investment that has been basically marketing access to the ferry to Boston. And what I would really like to urge the selectmen to do would be to invite one of the principals down for a meeting with the town by Zoom, if possible, before the November 2nd meeting, because at that meeting, the cuts are going to be voted. And we won't have had any opportunity to share publicly some of the impacts that that are going to be so devastating to the town. So I don't know whether it's possible to invite Secretary Pollock down for a Zoom meeting, but I would urge you to try to accomplish this. The other couple of points I'd like to make is that 50% of our commuters to downtown Boston from Hingham and Cohasset take public transit. It's probably the highest percentage of public transit usage of any metropolitan suburb outside of Boston. And Mayor Walsh was talking about the usage of public transit in Boston. And the only number that I heard that exceeded ours was East Boston, actually. So we have a huge use of public transit among our commuters to Boston. The other thing that that you should know is that 50% of the boat riders are Hingham, typically Hingham commuters, and that means that we have from 15 to 1700 commuters to Boston who are from the town of Hingham. So I just think that for the for the impact on our smart growth, the, if it's 300 million or so down in the shipyard in the Cove Development, the new Avalon residences, considering the impact on our highways, if in fact we have to go back to the roadways, I really do urge the selectmen to try to get one of these principals down here so that we can have this out with them before they take the vote on the cuts on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha. Anyone else? Okay, Selectmen Town Administrator Reports. Michelle?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tom?
Yes, I do have one. I wanted to let the town know that we had a harrowing event yesterday where there was a bomb threat called in regarding or relating to Linden Ponds. And and it's at times like this, I think, that we all thank, we are, we're all so thankful for the professionalism of both our police and fire departments. And I just wanted to make a couple of callouts to our, to some folks inter internal to our organization, but also some agencies that that assisted with that. For the Hingham PD Command Post, Lieutenant Ryan O'Shea and Sergeant Jeff Kilroy were were critical to the to the response effort. For the Hingham Fire Department, we had Captain Winnie, as well as Deputy Chief Powers, were right there in the thick of it, and and again, helping with to make sure that there was a sufficient response. Other outside agencies, and and this is, you know, more and more true that these types of responses are done on a on a regional basis. So we had the Norwell, the Cohasset, and the Hull Fire Departments and Police Departments, plus Rockland, Situate, Weymouth, Cohasset, and Quincy all participated, Quincy with their police canines, and the Massachusetts State Police, as well as the the Federal Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms Office in Boston. So this was taken very seriously. It's a region, it was a regional response. It was prompt, it was professional, and it resulted in a in a in a in a in a result that that allowed everyone, I think, at that facility to to breathe breathe a sigh of relief at the end of it. So, again, thank you to Chief Jones and your team, Chief Murphy and your team. Job well done.
Thank you. Chief Jones, something to add?
Thank you, Mary. I just wanted to thank Tom for his remarks, and also just extend my thanks to all the members of the department that worked to see this event to a safe conclusion with minimal disruptions to the residents and staff of Linden Ponds. As Tom said, that the event went very smoothly under the direction of Lieutenant O'Shea and Sergeant Kilroy with our fire department colleagues and regional law enforcement partners. It's a good reminder also to to let people know that if they follow our social media accounts, we provide almost real-time updates to events such as this. If you had family members or anything up in Linden Ponds, for example, you could have gotten almost real-time updates as to what was going on up there. And that'll also save calls from coming into our regional emergency communication center as well. So just thank you very much for your support and recognition.
Thank you.
You know, Mary, I'm sorry, one last comment, and Chief Jones, you hit on it at the end. I had the, I had my regular Board of Directors meeting for the South Shore Regional Call Center this morning. And it was, it was mentioned there, and it's it's obvious in hindsight, the Shrek operators, you know, it's it's easy to overlook them. They're coming in just like our police and fire officers every day, and they're sitting at those stations, and throughout this entire pandemic, and they haven't missed a beat. Yesterday's effort was complicated. It was multi-jurisdictional, and again, all all signs from all of the chiefs that I was with this morning, from all of the Shrek communities, pointed to the fact that our Shrek operators were were top-notch. They did exactly what they needed to do, and they made sure that communications were were clear and and appropriate throughout the event. So a shout out to Lori Crook and her and her team, and and I think they do a great job every day.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, Tom stole my thunder. Sorry, Joe. To thank, do the thanks. My mom lives at Linden Pond, so I had a personal interest in what was going on yesterday, and I really appreciate how it was handled, and I know she does as well. So thank you.
Bill?
Great job taking police and fire. Good work.
Okay. I have nothing else to add. Our next scheduled meeting is next Tuesday, the 27th. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Mary?
Aye.